So all these dignitaries here tonight, you two, you two be on your best behavior.
Good, good.
All right.
We'll try, we'll try.
So, what monster likes to play tricks on Halloween? Prankin' style?
Where do you get all these horrible jokes from? Is this what fartmen do, all citizens around tell horrible jokes to each other?
That's what dads do.
Oh, dad jokes.
So, what kind of pants does a ghost wear?
I've been thinking war pants.
Boo jeans.
You've been, you've been eating too much laughing taffy. Appreciate you calling, Telltale.
That's pretty good.
Call this meeting the order.
Sorry, I'm here.
Councilman Jonathan Heisey.
Present.
Councilman Rob Jones.
Here.
Councilman Ron Cardwell.
Here.
Councilman Matt Meyers.
Here.
Mayor Kurt Mayhew.
Here, if you'd join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you bow your heads, I want to take just a minute of silence for the, the officer out of El Reno. Just keep his family in your prayers, and we'll start that right now. Dear Heavenly Father, I come to you tonight, Lord, and just ask you to be with us and our families, and just let us count our blessings every day, Lord. Help us where we fall, and keep us moving forward, Lord. Help our council tonight, make the decisions for the greater good of our community. Be with the people traveling, Lord. In your name I pray, amen. I would like to, on the presentation and proclamations, I would like to move to item B. Presentation by Chief Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council, and also to our city manager, Josh Williams, for setting this up. Some people don't know, we are a combination fire department, meaning we still utilize volunteer firefighters. While we're not 100% volunteers, we were at one time, volunteers in the backbone of the department. So in early 2014, I got a phone call from Kara Owens, who was an EMT, and she was needing a refresher course for her EMT license. She knew that the Piedmont Fire Department was putting this course on, so we said, yeah, come on, we'll take care of that. So this was a four-day course, and a four-day course turned into 11 and a half years. We couldn't get rid of her, you know, we couldn't get rid of her. So she's served, the citizens of Piedmont, as a volunteer for 11 and a half years. Fire Department has changed dramatically over that time, and she's been a big role in those changes. Those of you that are able to attend our banquets, you know, historically, the department presents achievement award for the volunteer firefighter who responds to the most incidents. And in her very first year, without even being a full year, she won that award. Out of her 11 and a half years, she won that award 10 times. Now, this is hard to believe, but over her career, Kara has responded to 3,570 calls where the citizens of Piedmont needed help, and she left what she was doing, working family, to come aid them. That 3,570 is just incredible. Kara was highly involved in our Christmas outreach program, Marquis Donation Station. She headed that up for several years, and she was also very active in staffing our BLS ambulance back in 2019 and 2020, whenever we, the fire department was staffing that unit. We could almost always count on Kara to be on board that unit. So we want to say thank you to not only Kara, but also her entire family, Darren, Lucas, and Riley, who supported Kara and sacrificed time with mom for this city, and we wish Kara all the best with what lies ahead. We'd like to present you with a certificate of recognition, and then we're also going to celebrate her over at the fire station, but we promise we won't get too rattling here. So thank you guys, and thank you Kara.
That's just about one every day that she worked, at least, if not more than that. Pretty close.
Foot comment?
I said, pretty close, yeah, yeah. Without objection, I'd like to recess to the PMA. And without objection, I'd like to take the roll call from the city council meeting for the PMA meeting. We have another presentation from the OWRB prep grant, and our Senator Kristin Thompson.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I know that this is something that we've all been working on for quite a while. You all, much longer than I am, I've only been in the Senate for three years now, but one thing that we have been consistently talking about inside the Capitol is the growth and those growing pains that come with the growth in Piedmont. And so we know that a community that's growing as fast as Piedmont definitely needs water and infrastructure. And so today, we are very excited to have our friends from OWRB with us to present to you guys a big check with a big amount. It's $2 million for water infrastructure, and so I'll let, I'll turn this over to Representative Crosswhite Hader, and then we'll all huddle up and take a photo, if that's good with you.
Yes.
All straight.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here, but I'm, we're glad to always come, cut ribbons and celebrate, but we know that you guys are the ones that put the hard work in, especially the staff that makes this happen when you apply for things. We work at the legislature to make this happen, but if we didn't have local communities, members, especially volunteers, just like we had with Kara, it wouldn't work. And so we are really grateful for what you, the staff, and all the volunteers have made this happen as well. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much as well.
Yeah. Did I take a recess to take pictures, or?
No.
Well, this is just a presentation.
Okay, we're voting later on, we're good.
Yeah. Pictures, yeah.
Pictures.
Maybe we should go in front of those tables? Do we want to do it right here? Do we want to do it here?
Um, yes, we can do it here.
Hey, are you part of this?
Well, how do you get, what?
Come on.
You get to hold your, you get to hold the check.
Moving on to the consent agenda of the PMA. Mr. Jones, do you want to pull anything?
No.
Jonathan?
No.
Matt?
No.
Ron?
No.
Byron?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, A, B, and C.
Second.
Um, Ron?
Aye.
Byron?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And Jonathan?
Aye.
Item six. Citizen comments. This is for non-agenda items. The two that I have for the PMA are actually agenda item. So, anybody else fill one out, or not turn one in? So we'll move to schedule business. The presentation and discussion on the OWRB loan and project schedule. Mr. Mark Long?
All right, thank you very much. We'll pull up the presentation. I think you guys all have handouts, so we'll go ahead and proceed on. Again, this is a progressive update. By way of agenda, on the second slide, you can see the list of all the projects. And then on the third slide, there's the map of the projects as well. That's not it. Yeah, that's not it. There we go. Okay. All right, so the agenda is the second slide. So looking at, this is the, the program as we've laid it out, and as you can see at the bottom, the prep grant has been added to this overall program to the, to coordinate all the efforts of the grant. So congratulations on you guys receiving this additional prep grant. The next slide is the map that shows the overall program projects, and we'll really just go to the next slide and focus on the actual project, progress. So on 25-001, the water distribution improvements, we have completed the 1 million gallon tank outlet upgrade and received, and we've received those additional flow meters that you authorized the purchase of about two months ago. So we're in the process of completing, installing all the flow meters, looking at analyzing the SCADA system and the valve control system. We actually completed the yard piping, which was a kind of an interim-type project that we recommended that you do, and I'll have a few slides on that, that we can talk about that more specifically. On 25-02, the 1 million gallon elevated storage tank, we have made progress in that an offer letter was sent to a property owner. We're currently working with city manager and the city attorney in negotiating with those property owners.
Owners, plural, is there more than one?
Owner for, owner for the tank.
Oh, okay.
We do have preliminary offers started for the pump station and the vault locations, but those have not gone out, but we're actually negotiating with the 1 million gallon tank right now. The plans and specifications for the 1 million gallon tank are actually at 90% complete, and so those are just ready, once we can finalize the site, then we'll do the site plan, and we'll be ready to take your first project out to bid, so. And as I said, that's paused until the offer's accepted. On the water wells, I'll have a slide on that, and we can review that. We met with our hydrogeologist, we're currently doing the researching of the well drilling and rehab methods. We're looking at the current well sites, and we're determining what's going to be the best options, which wells are going to be the most suitable in a, in a ranking as far as how we can rehab them and get them back online. Next slide. Project 25-04, the secondary Oklahoma City Water Connection. 30% design is completed. We're, we're actually very close to completing the 60% design. We've identified, and I'll show a photo, we've identified the location of where the Piedmont side vault will need to be, generally what corner of the intersection. 25-005, the additional water line. We are looking at acquiring property and continuing design on that pump station as well. So we have not, we've got the offer letters actually identified, but we have not sent those yet to the property owners. The prep grant, we are actually in the process of completing the field work on the survey, and we're working on processing that, and then we'll start on that water line design under the prep grant. So that project is going to run parallel with all the other projects. The next one is a photo of the project that you awarded to Simron Construction, and this was that interim project, looking at the yard piping and improving the valve and the locations that we had identified that were a problem. These, these items have been completed, and actually, we feel like we do have some operational improvements as far as how that tank is functioning. We should not have a problem anymore of the tank completely draining, which is what happened last summer. So, these modifications should prevent that from happening again.
This is, this is helping the pumps take water from the tank, correct?
Right.
Right.
And it's alleviating the situation where the pumps were running all the time, and then we also then had that situation whenever the, the tank just drained under the load last summer.
Yeah, okay.
These were, these were probably a result of a miscellaneous group of efforts that were done over probably a 10 or 15-year period of time that were never really documented where all the yard piping was at, so. Okay, the next slide is the current well sites. So this is on the well site. So these are well sites 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. We're actually working with the hydrogeologist, evaluating what the future sustainability is for all of those sites, and then we'll prioritize them as far as what we'll be able to do as far as rehabilitation to bring them back online. The next slide is the water line upgrades, and as you can see, the, the red box shows the existing primary connection that you currently have. The two yellow boxes are the proposed locations for the new Oklahoma City vault, and then the Piedmont will have a vault on their side, so we're proposing to those be on the two separate corners. And then that will then be used to tie into the 16-inch line that then runs all the way over to a new surge tank site, and then eventually into the center of the water system here near the high school, so. That covers the water. Amanda Way will cover the wastewater.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. So on the wastewater projects, the first one is 25-006, the sanitary sewer evaluation study. We are continuing to review the manhole results, and we are also updating the GIS based on some of the information, because for all of the manholes, we have a picture showing the diameter of all of the pipes coming into and leaving each manhole. So the GIS system that your public works department put together has where everything is, but it doesn't have the information of actually what's under the ground, so we are filling that in for a more complete picture of your system, and they are continuing the CCTV work. I just got the smoke testing results Friday, so slowly starting to go through those, continuing to review the manhole results, and moving forward with that. On 25-007, the wastewater master plan and hydraulic model, the main information that we're working on is filling out the backbone of the report, so that we have that all done. And then as we fill in the, as we complete the hydraulic model, we will write that up, identify potential deficiencies, and provide recommendations. So right now, we're working on filling in that report, and then we've done a little bit on 25-008 for the wastewater lift station and interceptor improvements. There are a couple of lift stations that could use some new pumps, so we are researching those pump manufacturers and looking into getting you guys some new pumps to fix some immediate issues.
Do they need new pumps just because they're old and worn out, or because they're under capacity, or?
Yes.
Both. Okay, good answer, all right.
Yes, they, they have been there for a while, and part of the problem is that there is a decent amount of infiltration and inflow coming in, and when there are heavy rains, like what we had in the spring, and right now, the pumps have trouble keeping up. And so that is also something that the sanitary sewer evaluation study is definitely helping to identify, is where that extra water is coming into the system. So then on the schedule, we are progressing right along. We, our main holdup for any of this is on the million gallon tank, and that's just negotiating with the property owners, and we have tentative meetings scheduled, I believe, for next week to actually sit down with them and go over their terms and get that all hammered out, so we can bring that offer to you at the next council meeting. And then on the budget, that is also moving along. There is some construction budget that is starting to get spent mainly with the, the flow meters on the first water project, water distribution improvements. And so we will start including that also, one, now that that is starting to accumulate some spent money. But for the most part, we are, we're right on track, and we're happy with the progress.
Any questions? Hey, Jonathan, so have you noticed improved water pressure at your place?
Yes.
Good, all right. So the system's working.
Fantastic.
That's what we need, thank you. All right. Item B, discussion, consideration, possible action to allow the PMA managers to enter into a contract with Wolfport to do CCTV and PMA manholes and services.
All right. In discussion with the city manager, we brought this forward. Essentially, when we put together the loan program, we were using an existing GIS map that you had. It had identified line work of the collection system and the number of manholes. It's not anyone's fault, but you had paper maps that were digitized into this GIS system. As it turns out, there were, and I'll let Amanda speak to the number, but there were many, many more manholes over the course of, we, Wolfport has been our subcontractor on the SSES. There were more manholes that we encountered than what were actually shown on the atlas sheet that you had, which also then allowed us to further project forward that you have more several thousand, tens of thousands of linear feet of collection line that were not on the map. When we set up the budget for 25-6 on the SSES... When we set up the budget for twenty-five dash six on the SSES, we had estimated doing the SSES, which was smoke testing, CCTV, and manhole inspections, and then we had left some of that money to actually then take those results and go and do some manhole rehabs, maybe do point repairs that would have been identified in the CCTV. What we're recommending is because we have, and I'll let Amanda speak to the number of manholes, and seventy-six additional manholes and seventy-one thousand two hundred and thirty-one additional feet of collection lines over what was already in the process. The money would be better spent, let's finish the CCTV. We've already identified the manholes, so we need to just go ahead and do the inspections on those additional manholes that we've not touched. And then we'll still have money left over in twenty-five dash six for some manhole rehabs and other minor repair work later on. This also will allow for that wastewater master plan to be more comprehensive, and we can actually identify the entire number of footage and what those projects need to be going forward, so. We're not touching any of the master plan money, we're not touching any of the design or construction money for the new lift station or any of the collection. When, in working with Mr. Williams, we felt like if the, if the PMA hires Wolfport directly, SRB will still coordinate all that work, there's no additional engineering fee involved, we just feel like you should have CCTV for the entire system, so.
What percentage of the manholes, seventy-six extra manholes, seventy-one thousand linear feet of extra pipe, what percentage is that of the total city system?
So I do not have the exact linear footage of the system, but we originally thought there were three hundred twenty manholes, and then we found out that there are four hundred sixty-three. For the CCTV work and for the SSES work that we have going on, we prioritized inspecting just shy of four hundred manholes, so about three hundred ninety-seven, smoke testing the system, and then doing CCTV work on, I want to say about twenty-five to thirty-thousand linear feet. And so then that left an additional about seventy-six manholes and seventy-one thousand two hundred thirty-one linear feet to still have CCTV work done.
Do you know how much CCTV work has been done?
I believe that they have completed about fifteen to twenty thousand linear feet so far.
So, okay. So there's a lot more pipe than what we thought there was?
Yes.
More, more than double?
More than double from what was on your atlas sheets. Now, that probably happened because people tied on to sections and built lines, and there wasn't like common interceptor collection type system.
And there are at least three new neighborhoods that have been developed and have sewer lines.
In them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Do you feel comfortable at this point that you've identified all but, I mean, in other words, all the linear feet, all the manholes, so we don't come back with this something else?
We feel fairly confident. We can't guarantee.
Right.
But we do feel fairly confident at this point.
Yeah, you're within a very small percentage now, especially with all the smoke testing that we did.
Yes.
It became more obvious as Wolfport was going through with their trucks, and they're identifying, well, wait a minute, we've got, we've got lines coming into manholes that lead to another line, so.
Yeah, they've already found between five and ten manholes that Public Works had not even identified at all.
You mentioned the new developments, are you, are you talking about doing CCTV on, on those?
Where we've identified that there's lines that are tying to some of those lines, we've identified that they're actually part of, and they're collecting into your existing system, so. So we'll only CCTV what is tying into the collection system itself.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying, if they're fairly new.
It doesn't make much sense to send a, send a camera in them?
That's what I was thinking, but I don't know if.
Agreed, so we also do prioritize which lines get, have a camera sent down first, and so we have prioritized the older lines and the main lines.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But the one good thing about having it is then we build an ability of reviewing all the footages, and then we can say, these are in a pretty good condition right now, and so we don't have to worry about looking at them in the future. It will make the ability to leverage to go after other types of funds. There's clean water, SRF money that has been available in the past, and if we identify this with the SSES TV work, then we can leverage that for that clean water.
Which will help remove some of the I and I issue, right?
Very much so.
Yeah, good.
And possibly OWRB could come back out with another big check.
With another two billion dollar check, yeah.
Quite possibly.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're very much, the more you can do the SSES work and do the CCTV, then you'll have a library of what needs to actually be done and prioritized. And, and I think it's important to note that you had plans that were digitized also with an atlas, and there was not really, maybe everything wasn't looked at whenever they were developing the original GIS, so.
Has there been any conversations with city staff that there are people connected to the sewer that aren't paying a sewer fee?
That topic has come up. We, we have talked about it, but we have not really gotten it.
Determination on that yet?
Well, and we're, yeah, we, we need to make sure where we're at before we.
Okay.
And, and then, yeah, there are, that's something that has to be addressed, if people are tying into the collection system.
Who knows what happened a long time ago?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Especially right now that, you know, you have everything going to the Oklahoma City wastewater, Deer Creek wastewater plant. However, Oklahoma City did send a letter to the city of Piedmont stating that, you know, no, you can't add new development to go to Deer Creek. It's a moratorium on the Deer Creek wastewater treatment plant. So we need to actually have a, a very good handle on what all the collection lines are so that we can start taking advantage of the new.
Lagoons.
Upgrades, the upgrades to the lagoon. We spent over a million dollars of ARPA money, we just need to like figure out how to get the, the collection lines to that.
Yeah, yeah, put pumps back in the manhole that they were taken out of.
So ultimately back to this, Wolfport is the same contractor that we're using, we just felt like if PMA hires them, then we'll coordinate all their work, so.
The way the contract is written, if we were to have a sub-agreement with them, then we would have to amend our contract with you guys, and so this feels much cleaner. You'd just have the PMA manager sign the contract, and we will continue to handle everything as if they were directly our sub.
Do we have, do we have an extra three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in PMA to pay for this?
So it's, it's actually.
Is it coming out of our?
It's coming out of twenty-five dash six. We had, out of the construction budget for manhole rehab and point repair.
So in the PowerPoint is just the design budget for us, and then there is an additional construction budget. And so in that, under PMA twenty-five dash six, there is, I believe, five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars allocated for that, and this contract is about three hundred fifty-three thousand, which would leave about two hundred thirty thousand dollars left to go back in and rehab manholes, put clean outs, put caps on clean outs.
Take care of the I and I type problems, which is still a pretty sizable amount of money for that, so.
Is it still going to cover the additional seventy-one thousand feet of linear stuff that we didn't know we had?
Yes.
Yeah. That's what they have in their agreement on that, for CC in that, yeah.
No, I meant the budget. You said the original budget for oh oh six included five hundred thousand some for construction, which of that, a lot of that was going to be for rehab and reconditioning. We just added an extra seventy-one thousand feet that may need reconstruction and rehab. So is that number going to need to expand since we just doubled the amount we were bringing to rehab?
Well, if we have, you're, you're going to need to rehab manholes and do point repairs and, and fix breaks in the pipes. So yes, it will, but by having the CCTV, then you can actually know how much of that seventy-one thousand does have problems.
Gotcha.
Whereas right now, if, if we do it the other way, let's say we proceed on and just do point repairs and manhole rehabs off of what we have SSES data on, then we'll basically come back to you at the end of that phase and say, well, let's go do a little bit more of the CCTV. We'd rather just get all the CCTV done now, and then that way we can actually plan for it. And then we can probably leverage a different funding source from OWRB that's Clean Water Act SRF money, which right now you're under an FAP type loan. We could use that Clean Water Act money to actually.
Fix those lines, yeah, yeah.
And you'll actually have a full GIS atlas complete, that's the whole entire system.
Correct, which without doing the TV, we won't know what all is tied to everything underground. So it's, it's similar to the, to the million gallon tank in the yard, we didn't know where all the pipes were connected because nobody had as-built it that, so.
And Matt, just, just so you know, I know there, just so you know, and tell everyone else, the documentation notes like the manhole number, you know, there's a logical system, so all the videos, you know, will have manhole number, length of pipe, I mean, there's tons of data on there, so anyone in the future can come back, you know, and look at this stuff and know exactly where they're at relative to the map and everything.
And then Amanda and her team will build the wastewater model off of, will able to be able to run the model with all the pipes in it instead of just some of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, okay.
Which it, it doesn't say that it's not going to work, you just have less, you would have nodes in this model, and you would have less of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
I'll, I'll make a motion that the PMA manager enter into the contract with Wolfport Inc. for three hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars, seventy-one cents, as identified in their scope of work.
Second.
Matt.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
Jonathan.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Byron.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, discussion, consideration, and possible action for the appeal of the water meter application by the residents at seven nine eight zero Apache Street Northwest. So there was not a public hearing on this agenda item, but I held them, can we do that now? So we have two hearing of citizens on this item?
Yeah, you can hear it now.
Hear it now, okay, making sure I didn't mess up on that. Thurman? Come on up, boss. This is Thurman Jones.
Follow the rules. We've, in nineteen seventy-five, when the Water Authority requested right-of-way, y'all all should have this information, I think. Is there any explanation that you need on it, or you, rather than me just go back over it?
This was a, so you just got the same information we got in the handout?
Right, right.
Okay.
We've sent, we've, we've drilled a well, we've got a dry hole, we're, we've got eighty acres without water, and we're trying to, uh, uh, get water, if possible. We'd like to build a little cabin on it for our family use, just will be used every weekend, but it's, uh, it's something that, uh, it started back in nineteen seventy-five when they come around and run these rural water lines, they, uh, they got, uh, they asked for the, for the right-of-way, just told the people they'd give them a, a meter. Mr. Paul Stover had, had a hundred and sixty acres, he lived on, he lived on, but eighty acres of it was not in use, you know, I mean, as far as needing a water meter at the time, and he, he asked for two water meters. The map indicates that there is a spot on, on the map, I don't know, I, I assume y'all looked at it, that map that come with your handout, but, uh, so, uh, in September, we had a well drug, went a hundred and eighty feet, got a dry hole, it didn't, it didn't even quite make a gallon a minute, so, uh, that's where we're at on that. I don't know whether, I don't know whether Gina has any more to say about it.
Yep, Matt. Gina, do you want to go ahead?
Um, I just wanted to, good job, so sorry. Thank you for entertaining us tonight. I just wanted you to note that it was a handshake, and there is a theme tonight of water, obviously, and that is a precious commodity, and in Oklahoma, so is a handshake. And every one of you guys have understood what that means and looked into people's eyes when they said they, they were gonna do, do something for you. So as you're voting, I just would appreciate that you take that into consideration and help us make Piedmont a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council.
Do we know what size the water line, what the water pressure is, and any?
Two-inch line, according, according to the map that shows it's a two-inch line, there hasn't, there hasn't been a test ran on it.
There hasn't been a water study, yeah.
No water study done out there, well. I personally, I'm, I'm of the opinion, you know, the city in nineteen seventy-five got an easement for the water line, and it was obviously some kind of consideration, you know, needed to be given, be it either monetary or, you know, a meter. And I know we have a resolution with regards to, the only, the only case that we would be able to provide water is if they, you know, were on a well with a residence and ran out of water, then we could provide them water. But we have a different situation here where something of valuable consideration, you know, should have been given and hadn't been given yet, be it in writing or not, we know that the city received something of valuable consideration. I really think that, you know, a water study needs to be done, and maybe an agreement, you know, made like, you know, you can't irrigate your property, you can, you know, serve a residence, you know, a cabin, some bathrooms, or something to that effect, and, and I think our city attorney should look at that and weigh in on that as well, depending on however we decide this, or at least have an opinion on whether or not we should, we should do this because of the problems that we've had in the past with decisions being made on whether or not to provide water outside the city limits because of the issues that we do have. That's my comments for your guys' my two cents.
Any other side of things?
Think we have a resolution.
I think we have a resolution that says no new connections outside city limits unless you have an existing residence that has a well failure, and then we would consider it. I don't think we need to go bending the rules for anyone. I think it sets a bad precedent, especially considering item E and F on the agenda. And that's where I stand.
I tend to lean Ron's direction. Mainly because of the evident... I mean, I know it was a handshake deal, but, uh... I think also that the issue of occasional use is, uh...
You can't stop it once they get it, though.
No, I agree with you on that. You're right. But I do think that, you know, if we could come to an agreement on no irrigation, something like that, depending on what a water study might say, I... I'm not willing to just say flat-out no on this particular one. If it was somebody bringing in, you know, a totally new situation with no history, that's completely different, and that's what the moratorium is all about. And completely in agreement with it, would not even be consider an exception to that.
I mean, because ownership of the land is, it hasn't been sold, it's been passed down, correct?
Correct.
See, if the land would have been sold without a written agreement, I think you'd have a different situation.
I, uh, I agree.
But that would be a legal interpretation, I think, that our attorney needs to weigh in on it.
Do you want my legal input on this at this time?
If you have.
Well, that or may... I don't know how much of you looked into it. I would rather you have an in-depth look into it than an off-the-cuff remark.
I have, I have all the deeds, they're right here. I've read them before, hit the agenda.
Okay, great.
To your first point, I don't know if that's going to have any different legal ramifications on if they sold it or not, because the easement and the easement rights run with the property, not with the person, unless the easement that was granted only ran with the person. I anticipate this stretch of run is going to have many property owners. And so the problem you get into is if all of them think they have handshake deals, then how far are we running down this whole pipe?
Well, how has the land been subdivided? We're talking about one, we're talking about one property.
It doesn't matter, though, because the easement runs with the land. That's the fundamental point of easements. So if you think about owning a property, it has a road easement on it. You may sell it later, but the person who buys it still gets to use the road easement because the easement runs with the land, not with the person. Unless you drafted the easement in such a way that it ran with the person, not the land, which you would never do, that's not kind of a premise of property law. So with that said, on these documents, being your attorney advising you on the documents, and they admit it, it's just not there, and no fault to them, it's just at some point, when you're making these things, you put it in there. And we have lots of easements with Piedmont where it's in there. It says, "This is part of the consideration, grantor, grantee, X, Y, Z." It's very clear. It's just not here, so my...
But we just heard from the last man, I'm so sorry, that...
Oh, are we still having a public hearing?
I'm so sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So, go ahead.
So, the easement runs with the land, it's not written on the instrument. I don't know how many other implications you would have on this stretch of run. Your resolution has, I think it's four factors that you're supposed to consider. So my legal advice to you would be consider the four factors.
What are those four factors again?
Prior to 2001, January 1, can't be a mobile home or structure, and there's talking about the... There has been existing man on site, you have to have your water models. Yes, and the data engineer.
So prior to 2000, existing man on site.
Water press... Pressure study.
Water pressure study.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just...
Eric, pass that down to Mr. Cardwell.
I'd like to help, okay? The thing that concerns me is, once again, this is cascade into someone else coming in saying, "Well, I want a water meter, and I want a water meter." I want... We have to be careful.
Oh, absolutely.
So I think we have to discuss this further.
My question for the city attorney is, are we setting a precedent for everyone who has a water line, he's been on their property outside the city limits, to come and ask us for a new connection?
So I would say either this is the rule or it's not the rule. If you want to do this, then you need to change your rule, because this is what your PMA policy states. And that, by all means, that's a legislative decision for you all to make. But yeah, I think so. I mean, this is either the rule, it's not the rule, and we can't have arbitrary enforcement of the provisions of the regulations. I had one more point on that, let me think if I can remember what it was. It was on a roll there, and I forgot what I was going to say next. Now, I remember what it is, I'll chime back in in a second.
Any other questions? Comments?
Oh, I remember what it was. As a matter of policy, I would just encourage you all to consider whether or not you have an objective towards growth of the community or not. I know that this property is, I think, adjacent or relatively adjacent to your city limits. And so in the long term, as you're going and you're carrying debt, and you have, you know, to have that debt is shared across all of your taxpayers on bonds or whatever, I think it might make sense to be in city limits because they're paying a proportion share of that debt, or whatever loans you're getting in the future. If we go outside of our policy and we're giving connections outside, then you don't have that taxing authority outside of your boundary. And so I know that was discussed as an option, and I'll let Julie chime into that if she wants to, but I don't think this particular applicant wants to be annexed in per se, but they want to have the benefits of the connection. And so I think as a policy, we need to decide, do we want to...
No, that was going to be my question, could they annex in to get water?
I'll let Julie chime into that, I think she addressed that with them, I don't think that was an option that was open to the applicant.
It would be Kristen, but...
All right, Kristen.
I did offer them...
Come on up.
Oh, it was Kristen, I'm sorry, we talked about that.
To offer them to annex into the city limits because where the France sells property is, and then there's their properties, and then there's city limits. So there's just a gap there in between, and Daniel said they could annex in and become part of our city limits, and then that would no longer be an option, and they opted not to do that at this time.
We weren't guaranteed a water meter at that time. I mean, as far as when is the city limits, are we guaranteed a water meter?
If you were in the city limits, then we wouldn't have it. And you have pressure and all that.
We've got a water...
You don't need to make any improvements and, you know...
Does the whole lady have to be in it?
It's either all the property, or you subdivide the property.
You could subdivide it.
Put, you know, part of it in and not all of it, yeah.
What does subdivision constitute?
You're out in the county, whatever the county requires out there.
Draw it up and file it.
Yeah. Anyway, okay.
So, here's the deal, I don't want to send them out with the expectation that to do a water study, then we'll argue again, because then they're out money. We have an ordinance in front of us, a resolution in front of us, so I don't want them to think, oh, we'll go pay money to have this, and then we come back and we say, well, we still have the resolution, sorry.
Well...
That's just, I don't want you guys to think that, because I don't know.
It sounds to me like the option is, the landowner has the option to determine if they want to be annexed into the city. And once that is done, my understanding is a water study still has to be done to determine if there's adequate pressure to have a connection there.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So I think the landowner needs to determine what they want to do.
Yeah.
And they come back to us. They know the options, and they need to, it's their decision to make.
Well, here's my, though, getting back to the agenda item, is the appeal of the water meter application. And so, I mean, we either go with this resolution that we have, or we table this and say, we're going to look at changing this resolution, or we talk about something different later, but right now, this is the application.
I say we, I think we should table it, they can do their homework, make their application, what they want to do, and we bring it back at a later date.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Awesome, I'll second that.
Rob.
Aye.
Aye. Ron.
Aye.
Aye.
Josh.
Aye.
Item D, discussion, consideration, possible action...
We had talked to county about how much the lady has to be put into the... Into the...
Yep. Item D, discussion, consideration, possible action to allow the city manager to enter into a loan with F&amp;M Bank to address ongoing street and road repairs without Piedmont in amounts of 1.3 million with a three- or four-year authorization schedule as attached.
I don't know if I'm teeing this one up or someone else's, but I'll just jump in there. The terms are on page 41, you have two amortization schedules to choose from. And we're in the PMA, so the note is with the PMA. And I know that in the letter, it talks about pledged interest in city tax and sewer and water revenues. Of course, the sewer and water revenues are on the PMA side, so that makes sense. I would just clarify in the contract that the sales tax are subject to yearly appropriations due to the constitutional debt limitation. Other than that, you'd be eligible to do this on the PMA side.
Yeah, I was, um, that's what I was questioning was two things. You know, 1.3 million for road repairs, and Josh clarified that it's road repairs for the roads that we have listed to repair on our CIP. It's just not general road repairs.
Oh, okay. That was my...
We're going to go fill potholes, right?
Yeah, that was my question. Where's the...
Yeah, okay, all right. So I would like...
The loan was in the budget.
Huh?
The loan was in the budget that we approved. The 1.3 million dollar loan was in the budget that we approved. So it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. But as the agenda item's written, you know, I think it should, you know, a note should be added, you know, that it's road repairs, you know, to fix roads according to our...
Existing...
Existing road repair list, right. And then Daniel, I mean, I wasn't too sure, since it's, you know, city, you know, roads are paid for out of city tax revenue, if we could use water and sewer funds to pay for road repairs, and apparently we can.
Your question is, can you use the sewer revenues to pay the...
Water sewer revenues to pay for road repairs.
The PMA is a trust, and the city is the beneficiary of the trust. So the money goes through the trust, and then transfers onto the beneficiary, would be the government, the city government.
Again, when we approved the budget, we approved pledging the annual use tax, portions of the annual use tax, to pay this note back.
I was going to say, the PMA was going to, which we transfer funds to PMA all the time.
Correct, you can transfer the funds from the city to the PMA.
Yeah, it doesn't happen the other way around very often.
Yeah.
You know, where the PMA's backfilling the general fund.
High hopes to get there, though, council.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. There's a saying about hoping for something and something else, on the other hand, and which one fills up faster, you know, I don't know. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't doing something that we couldn't do, so...
But we have to, we have to decide on which amortization tonight, is that right?
The four years.
That's the purpose of it.
That's what it says on the, yeah.
Yeah, the four years, the veteran one.
Well, but the three year, uh, we have, in the budget, we have $500,000 for debt repayment under capital improvement fund.
Well, is that that 497 item in the revenue, the negative 497 that you're looking at?
I'm looking at, uh, expense, capital improvement fund, page 13 of your agenda packet.
Yeah.
The top of the page, the last line in the expense category.
F&amp;M note 2025.
We have budgeted $500,000.
Yeah.
So I don't, why wouldn't we do the three-year amortization at the payments for 71,300?
Is that...
What's it save us by doing that?
Well, you pay off the note faster, you pay less interest.
Well, we can always have it on a four-year am schedule and pay it off in three. Yeah, there's no early payoff penalty or anything.
You save about $30,000.
Yeah.
From three to four years.
Three to four, yeah. I really don't think... Is that 500 really sitting in the bank right now to pay it off? It's one of those paper budgets.
Well, everything on the budget's paper budget.
Uh-huh, until the money actually comes in, that's my...
I do see that the city manager, obviously, is not here tonight, but his recommendation is to enter into a loan with F&amp;M Bank for a four-year amortization schedule.
Right, yeah.
So I didn't see that before, so...
Yeah.
That's his recommendation, then I'll go with his recommendation.
Yeah, because that's an expense, not an actual revenue, so... Is that your motion?
Any other comments?
No.
Questions?
I move to approve item D with a four-year amortization schedule.
Second.
Matt.
Aye.
Byron.
Aye.
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 Item D, executive session for...
Gordon's Hall.
Make a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
Rob.
Aye.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Aye.
Byron, sorry.
Aye. There we go.
Good shooting.
I get you.
He used to be the first, one of the first buildings to value ourselves.
Power Blair.
So you didn't think, you didn't think it had a lot of shit to do with it?
Late sixties.
Because in the good days, we didn't have much.
I wasn't worried about your city, I wasn't worried about your office.
That was before I was there, that was back in the sixties.
Earl was on there, too.
Name all the mayors out there.
Back in the good old days.
I remember going to a few meetings.
You all know the restaurants?
Just basically, you go up that hall, straight across the hall, men and women, and you just gotta go right away.
And the air is freezing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Where'd you go for it?
It's O B I, and they have a good place down in New York.
Yeah, they keep trying to get you-
I used to go to the one in Portland a few days.
Right, I did there, but they changed it.
It's too far away from me.
You know, to do a full load.
It's two years, two hours.
Minimum, minimum of two.
Well, see, I'm retired.
Yeah.
When I worked for the county, I tried to do it.
They won't be able to there. My poor van.
To give plasma?
Uh, platelets.
Platelets, it takes longer.
It takes two hours, that machines in there.
For a full load, almost, almost two and a half.
I've done it once. And they put that stuff in, you know, the matrix field. Oh, the flims. While I'm sitting there, just-
I tell them, I tell them, I'm like-
I call this meeting back to order. No action taken on item F. I don't have- Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't have any new business, so we'll adjourn this meeting. Without objection, I'd like to adjourn this meeting and reconvene back to the city council meeting. Yeah, I was gonna say, hate to do this to everybody, but we have attorneys that we're paying right now, so without objection, I'd like to move to item C and move into executive session for the confidential communications between our city council and our attorneys on all the cases listed. Any objections?
Move to another executive session.
Yeah, right.
Second.
Rob.
Aye.
Jonathan.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Byron.
Aye.
So. I'm like, yeah. It's a shame. We don't need your money. We're good. So.
Call this meeting back to work. Item D, discussion, consideration, possible action concerning Canadian Canadian. Based on a review. Case numbers three eight four, three eight five, four four seven, three five four, one zero, four eight, six zero three nine, six two two four, five two seven, six zero three, forty seven, ninety eight, and two eighteen.
There's, there's no motion, there'll be no action.
No action taken on item D.
You haven't done the consent pending yet, Mayor?
Nope, we're gonna go back to item C, number four, page one. Presentation by Councilmember Brian Bahram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given where we are in the meeting, it seems a little appropriate now. Since coming on the City Council in 2023, I've been surprised at how often we have reason to go into executive session to discuss lawsuits brought against the city. Given that responding to lawsuits costs taxpayer money and takes time and attention away from accomplishing core city services, I believe we have to be as transparent as possible with our citizens regarding these legal issues. Therefore, from my own information, as much as anyone else's, I filed a Freedom of Information Act request for city staff to produce a list of lawsuits to which the city has had to respond, along with the amount of money spent to respond to these lawsuits. I'm going to briefly, factually describe the cases currently taking up our time and taxpayer money. Since I became a city council member in April of 2023, only one lawsuit has been filed against the city. It was briefed and quickly dismissed, so I am not including it in the list. There are three ongoing lawsuits that were brought prior to my time on the city council. These are CJ dash twenty twenty one dash four four seven, styled Bovers Homes versus City of Piedmont, CJ dash twenty twenty two dash three eighty four, styled Winding Creek Limited Partnership versus City of Piedmont, and CJ dash twenty twenty two dash three eighty five, styled Mark and Phil LLC versus City of Piedmont. These lawsuits date back to 2021 and 2022. However, because CJ dash twenty twenty one dash four four seven is partly based on a confidential settlement agreement from 2018, which involved cases going back to 2012, that's where I'll start, with 2012. On January nineteen that year, a lawsuit numbered CJ dash twenty twelve dash zero four six was filed by Bovers Homes LLC against the Green and Red Company and a long list of individuals. The complaint alleged defamation. Basically, it's a complaint that bad things were said about Bovers Homes. Nothing specifically is actually alleged about what might have been said or how it affected Bovers Homes. As with all the cases I will mention, lots of paperwork goes through the court, most of it having to do with technical legal issues and remarkably little having to do with the actual substance of the case, and none of it, in this case, added specificity. In September of 2022, ten years after this case was filed, defendants were granted a summary judgment dismissing the case due to a lack of significant evidence. To this day, there are defendants attempting to recover legal costs from the plaintiff. The City of Piedmont was not mentioned as a defendant, but city officials were a defendant. Thus, the city bore some significant legal expenses. The City of Piedmont cannot recover those legal costs because it gave up that option when the case was dismissed in accordance with the 2018 confidential settlement agreement. The city spent over fifty nine thousand dollars on this case. In September 2014, a federal case numbered CIV dash fourteen dash ten forty eight dash F was filed by Cindy Bovers and Rita Struber against the City of Piedmont for not approving a development the previous month. It was also dismissed in accordance with the 2018 confidential settlement agreement. In September 2015, in a case numbered CJ dash twenty fifteen dash five twenty seven, SBS Development LLC sued the City of Piedmont over denial of a plat application, alleging this occurred in retaliation for the earlier defamation defamation lawsuit by Bovers Homes, the one filed in 2012 and later dismissed in 2022. The plat in question was approved by December of 2015, three months after the suit was filed and four months after the plat's initial denial. The case was later dismissed under the 2018 confidential settlement agreement. The city spent over thirty six thousand dollars on this case. In October 2015, in a case numbered CJ dash twenty fifteen dash six zero three, Winding Creek Limited Partnership sued the City of Piedmont over denial of a plat application, also alleging this occurred in retaliation for the earlier defamation lawsuit by Bovers Homes, the same one later dismissed in 2022. In this case, the plat was approved by the end of June 2016, eight months after the suit was filed and nine months after initial denial. The case was later dismissed under the 2018 confidential settlement agreement. This case cost the city almost eighteen thousand dollars. In neither of the 2015 case pleadings could I find specific reasons for the initial denial of the plats or what changes, if any, were forthcoming by the time of approval. I'll just say it's odd to me personally that such details aren't in the pleadings or that a case can go forward for years without such details being included. In both cases, the city eventually pointed out the cases were moot because the plats were ultimately approved and/or city council members named as defendants had moved on. Two other federal cases were filed by Cindy Bovers in 2016 and 2017, case numbers CIV dash sixteen dash sixty thirty nine and seventeen dash sixty two thirty four, the pleadings of which I've not been able to read, given the prohibitive costs associated with downloading federal cases. These cases were dismissed under the 2018 confidential settlement agreement as well. All the cases I just mentioned from 2012 through 2017 were dismissed in 2018 as a result of a settlement reached between the City of Piedmont on the one hand and Phil and Cindy Bovers, Rita Strubar, or various Bovers entities like Winding Creek, SBS Development, and Bovers Homes on the other hand. Two other cases, one with Bovers as plaintiff and one with Bovers as defendant but not involving the City of Piedmont, were dismissed under the same settlement agreement. All cases were dismissed with prejudice. The 2018 confidential settlement agreement's terms were under seal. I do not know who proposed the seal, but it strikes me as improperly sealed, given the, that the payment of taxpayer funds was part of the settlement agreement. That agreement is no longer under seal per court order, and it is openly posted on the oscn.net website as an exhibit attached to the initial filing of the next case I will discuss. Thus, I am free to describe the terms of the 2018 settlement agreement since it is now public and available for download without cost. Under the so-called confidential settlement agreement, two hundred thousand dollars was paid to Bill Bovers and/or his interests, and the City of Piedmont agreed to fund four thousand feet of sewer line to connect Town Central, uh, Bovers Development to the city's sewer system. At a later date, under the terms of what's called an accord, the city paid Bovers' interests two hundred and eighty five thousand dollars to have them install the sewer line. No additional monies changed hands in settling the two entirely private cases included in the settlement agreement. Additional terms imposed on signatories of the agreement included agreeing not to disparage any Bovers Enterprises personally or on social media, or to pull down disparaging online media posts. There were no conditions imposed regarding the granting of plats, permits, or application approvals. Promising to approve or not approve plats would be an improper settlement agreement. Plats should be approved if they meet the city code and denied if they do not. In May of 2021, Kyle and Natalie Wagner sued Bovers Homes, Phil Bovers, and the City of Piedmont. Case number CJ dash twenty twenty one dash two twenty, over apparent water damage diversion that affected the Wagner's property in what is now the Shenandoah Two Development. This case has been dismissed, partly because the issues were being litigated in a separate, entirely private case that did not directly involve the city. The case cost the city about eight thousand dollars. In October of 2021, in case number CJ dash twenty twenty one dash four four seven, Bovers Homes sued the city over a development plan the city council did not approve involving Shenandoah Two. A major issue brought up in the initial pleading was the confidential settlement agreement, given that disparagement was alleged over the criticism of the plan for a box culvert along Morgan Road. The city won a summary judgment in 2022 with the case dismissed under the Oklahoma Citizens' Participation Act, which is intended to protect individuals and the public from harassing lawsuits intending, intended to silence legitimate public discourse and action. Under the OCPA, the city is entitled to recover all legal costs and punitive damages sufficient to prevent future harassing suits. Determining punitive damages depends partly on the damaged parties, i.e. the city's recommendation, which requires knowing the wealth of the plaintiff in a harassing lawsuit. We have spent significant money trying to ascertain a justified number for punitive damages due to Bovers' movement of assets. This case has cost city taxpayers over seven hundred thousand dollars. The last two cases are also brought by Bovers-involved entities. They are Winding Creek LLC versus the city, case CJ dash twenty twenty two dash three eighty four, and Mark and Phil LLC versus the city, CJ dash twenty twenty two dash three eighty five, having to do with the Chaparral and Shenandoah Two developments, respectively. Both allege arbitrary actions on the part of the city in approving applications and permits in 2022. In the case of Chaparral, an application for a change having to do with a water connection was emailed to the city's former city attorney, former city attorney, with plans attached as a PDF. The city requires full-size blueprints be submitted for an application to be valid. A decision in that case is being appealed. The Shenandoah case goes back to the box culvert. Both of these last cases arise from a period of transition for the city when personnel were changing, the city's engineering firm was being replaced, and communications by outside parties were being sent to the wrong people. There's not more I can say due to ongoing litigation. These two cases have cost the city about fifty thousand dollars. In total, by the city's reckoning, as carried out by my records request, since 2012, excuse me, since 2012, all litigation and the 2018 settlement have cost Piedmont taxpayers over one point four million dollars. When I apply an interest rate of three point seven five percent to the yearly costs of litigation, the settlement and the accord from these cases, the total increases to almost one point seven million dollars. That's nearly enough to pay for almost three miles of six-inch asphalt roadway, judging by the latest low bid for Piedmont Roads reconstruction. I arrived in Piedmont in 2015. I had no idea of these lawsuits even at the moment I was sworn as a member of the city council. Despite what I've since learned, I bear no animus toward anyone who lives, works, owns property, visits, or invests in this city. In 2018, there was evidently a genuine and costly effort on the part of the city to wipe the legal slate clean, but there's been ongoing litigation ever since. I'm an economist, and I have to say that I cannot imagine how this benefits any business in the city, whether a restaurant, a retailer, handyman, or a real estate developer. All I can do is make an effort to make sure our constituents are not as ignorant as I was when I was sworn into this office. And with that, I thank you for your patience, Mr. Mayor, and fellow council members. Daniel reminded me, I should have clarified this in, in, in the body of the remarks. Part of the, part of the cost was paid by our insurance. I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, I, I, I think part of, it was part of the settlement agreement that I know a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was paid, paid by insurance. So, um, that number, you could say, is inflated a little bit. Other than that, thank you.
No.
No.
Wrong.
Yeah, I think the income statement's item C. I had a question.
That's item B.
It is item B. Is that all you want to pull?
Yep.
Byron?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve A, C, D, F, and G?
So, move. Second.
Rob?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Byron?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Jones, you pulled item B.
Yeah, on, uh, just a quick question on page ten, halfway down, miscellaneous revenue, uh, negative four ninety seven, five hundred. What figure is that? What's the date activity? Four ninety seven, five hundred. I was just curious.
It's gonna be six one four five zero.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not included in the year-to-date.
Yeah, there's nothing. So, originally, we did not put a miscellaneous revenue in there, so when something does, if that account does one, then it shows up like that, the way that it looks up there when we wrote. So, that is a five hundred, that's a five hundred thousand dollars that we just paid for new R and D, that's kind of got from ODOT, and we got another five hundred that we just received as well. I believe they went into our general, but they were transferred into our.
Fair enough, thank you. Uh, let's see. I have a question on the fees. The maximum fee is apparently.
Uh, we're taking them one at a time.
Oh, sorry.
So, that's, you're talking about the bond schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take that one a second.
Ron, you also.
Yeah, I had the same, I had the same question about that. It just, it, you know, as, as revenue coming in on a month of date as a negative. Huh?
Yeah, it's a few thousand.
Yeah, yeah, and obviously, the original budget in that, those items were zero, uh, because we didn't know if we were getting those grants.
Yeah, we, we didn't budget.
Yeah, so it hits that as a negative because it's transferred. So, if it was for five hundred thousand dollars, why is this four ninety seven, five hundred? Because it's been twenty two hundred. And, and that, the remaining budget is two six nine nine oh two, so it's kind of like the math doesn't map up and add.
I think because it never, didn't originally have a number in there, so. But you'll be able to see it on the other side when we get our transfers all straightened out before we move the money over.
Okay.
From those two different, uh, five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. So, it's gonna look different next month. Okay. All right, thanks. Can I get a, uh, is there like a breakdown detail of that? Of that account? Will we have that for the next meeting? Anybody else have anything on item B?
Uh, move to approve item B.
Second.
Matt?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Byron?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Uh, Rob, you pulled item E.
Yeah.
Yeah, on, I was just curious about the, on the fees. Is there a, what, is $870 the limit for a reason? I mean, is there a loss, is it can't be higher than that? I'm just curious.
Which one are you looking at?
Well, I'm, there's a lot of, but in particular, estate from custody, resisting arrest, the $870. And that's fine, that's fine. But I look over here at unauthorized dumping. It's also $870. I'm just thinking the police department, I would think, would be protected more than that.
So there are certain, there are certain fees that are, we can't, are fines and fees that we can't be above state law.
Okay, that's above that.
Speeding is one. Speeding is the most ridiculous one that most people see because the state losses like $255,000 or max. We can't be above the state law and what their, what their fine and fee is. And so most of those, because we may have some of them that are $1,000 right at, because after the fines fees, so it goes up. And since we're not a court record, we can only go so, so high on certain things.
Just want to check that for police.
Appreciate that.
That's all I had. So 200, so $285 must be the maximum amount on speeding.
I think it's 200 is the maximum fine amount for the state.
Oh, I see.
And we have, we can assess court costs.
There's, and there's court costs and, and there's fees, and there's mandated state fees. So different offenses will have different amount of fees because they'll have the state fees tacked on to them.
So if you're going to speed, I guess, go ahead and go forward, go ahead and go forty over.
Alcohol offenses, we get an additional $150 that comes back to us to be from the district attorney's office on the UIs and stuff.
And we did a big comprehensive update on this last year, and the yellow ones are ones that Valerie went through and double-checked. And either there were some changes or one that we didn't catch last year to make sure we're following. So just cleaned it up.
Any other questions? So if I'm doing 20 over, if I'm doing 40 over, it's the same price? Unless, can you, so if you do catch someone going 40 over, can you get them for reckless?
It could be over the officer and the judge.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
The whole city judge requires three violations.
Oh.
So the number is, it could be just speed.
Oh, okay. It's good to know. Good to know.
So you know how, when you can get caught for that?
No. I don't like getting that.
Can I get a, any other questions on that? Item E. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve item E?
Second.
Jonathan.
Aye.
Rob.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Byron.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
I'm hearing assistance, Mr. Simpson.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, members of the House, members of the House, ladies. What I'm here to talk about.
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. What I'm here to talk about, to bring to you gentlemen's attention, they've been sending some of these letters out. I'll just read briefly, and you'll know what I'm talking about. It's notice of code violation and abatement. And it's issued from the code officer. And anyway, it's, this one letter goes to the property owners of Darrell R. Bennett Trust, 1409 Arrowhead Road Northwest. Okay, and the gist of this, it was mailed out on October the 8th. And they said, if you didn't mow this by October the 22nd, you'd be fined $250. Okay. Now, let me go. And I heard you didn't have interlocal agreement, but you did some roads out there with the county, so you do have to have interlocal agreement. And let me read. This was the Board of County Commissioners meeting, May 12th, 2025. It's agenda item six. It says Mansky moved, seconded by Ryder, to approve the interlocal agreement between Canadian County District One and the city of Piedmont that mutually benefits the two jurisdictions, which lie within the legal boundaries of Canadian County fiscal year 26, for fiscal year 2026. The county provide a mowing service on the right-of-ways of all sectioned line roads, with the exception of Piedmont Road, known as Highway Four, 178th Street, known as Ebon Road Northwest, and two miles of 164th Street, known as Washington Street East, from Cemetery Road Northwest to Mustang Road Northeast, a minimum of one time per fiscal year at date and time chosen by the county. This was effective July 1st, 2025, through June 30th of 2026, and they voted 3-0 to pass it. Well, then I looked up, let's see here. In your council meeting of June 23 of '25, item M, approval of interlocal agreement with Canadian County mowing, item M was approved as a group of items L through U. Ron made the motion, Jonathan Heissi second. You approved it 5-0. And so I don't know how that holds water while you're fining this. Oh, and then too, there is in your ordinance, there's a zoning codification in the ordinance's general description of District, Chapter Two, Section 121. That means A1, we are designating A1 General Ag as a, considered an essential, essential part of Piedmont. What it said in there, that as long as ag, uh, in us urbanized, which that means new houses or additions, that it shouldn't be on the landowners. And on this one road, on this one, you sent Mrs. Bennett, or Linda, that 192nd. No, it's Frisco, it's in between 192nd and 206. Well, you can't even drive down the road. It's not maintained by you guys. And I don't understand who, and Mr. Mansky said that they approved it, but he said the city manager did not sign that. If you approve the city streets on an interlocal agreement, he told me for like a street deal, they furnish the manpower and the equipment. You furnish the material, like a chip and seal road, like you did out there on 192nd. Uh, from Frisco to Richland Road for that addition up there. There's two miles out there. And this mowing, this year, I don't know who dropped the ball, but the farmers and the landowners can't do it because the other day, you had some city employee, employees mowing that from Frisco on 192nd back a half a mile, and they was mowing it with your tractor. And you've had a mower, but I don't think you have the personnel to run it. And I don't know if the city manager dropped the ball, and you guys didn't know it. I hated to come up here, but my brother tried to get a meeting set up with him last week. And I, where is he at tonight? Nobody can answer? Is he? Huh?
It is hearing assistance.
Okay. Well, he should be here tonight. But I don't, and, and I think you need a, also, I think you need somebody. You don't have a, a public works director. Because the other day, them guys, some of them took a two-hour lunch, and there was no supervision. And I don't know if you know that or not, but there isn't any. And the roads out there on Edmund Road, they graded it before, when it was real dry. Well, now it's washboardy. You, you need to drive in the morning, drive that from Cemetery Road to Frisco, and it'll shake your teeth out. And I brought that up years ago to the road grader. When it rains and it starts to dry, you go out there and grade it, and then your traffic will seal it back until we can get pavement out there. And that's what I'm saying, it's rural out there yet, even though we're in the city limits. Thank you.
I have no other citizen comment.
Oh, and there is about three or four more people's got letters like that, but not all the landowners have, have got the letters. They're just kind of picking and choosing. But you guys need to drive that tomorrow. Drive Frisco Road from 192nd to 206, and tell me what you think of it. You can't even get down it because I have a four-wheel drive pickup. Now, I can't understand why you gravelled all that road for that addition. There's 37 or 38 houses, and the developers should have had to kick in to help pay some of that, not you guys. And I know you did by the goodness of your heart because you've had complaints because people want to drive on them rough roads. None of us do.
You said Frisco from where to where?
192nd to 206.
Between Cemetery and Frisco is where the.
That's bad, but I mean, it's.
No, that's where they wanted to mow.
That's what they want mowed on her property from 109, or 206.
It was on 192nd.
192nd and 206.
And so. And then every's have got a complaint on.
That's all traffic destroys that, and every time it rains. This day, we don't have a dump truck. It depends on county, and their time to bring rock out.
And then bombing Cemetery, or, bombing 206 between Cemetery and Frisco.
It'd be Arrowhead between Cemetery and Frisco. And be.
I, I pulled out that one. That, that one, that one's hard on Arrowhead that got mowed because they're doing training for it. I know that's not the.
Oh, we're not supposed to discuss it. So I don't need to get this a lot. I don't need to. No, I'm just trying to clarify. Thank you. All right, moving on, scheduled business. A, presentation discussion. We've already done that on the PMA's.
No, you're right.
No, you're right.
Uh, it's only because that I am on the long bridge.
Does this need to be brought up as an agenda item to discuss it? Because I hate to come to you, but he wouldn't meet with us. And I guess he's so busy, I don't know. But I mean, it's just.
There are dozens of other agricultural.
Point of order, are we, are we still in public hearing, Mr. Attorney?
Okay, okay, Jonathan. If you guys want to look at this stuff, you signed off on it. And I mean, I'm not trying to rub it in, but we're tired of it.
I live on Arrowhead Road. Do you want to talk to me out here afterward?
Okay, do you guys, do you guys want some of this?
Talk to you about some, some stuff.
You want this?
Let, let's.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have a discussion. Do we need to do this?
Where are we at? Are we on 8A? Yeah, so this will be the pledge of this, of the city's contribution. So yes, you'll approve it here. And then when we get the final contracts, I'll clarify the distinction between the two. Correct. And we'll do this one every year.
Yeah.
Move to approve item 8A.
Second.
Rob.
Aye.
Aye.
Matt. Aye.
Aye.
Item B, discussion consideration of possible action altering council rules to the agenda. Changes to the measures being considered on the second reading.
Yeah, this is, this just has to do with our own procedures. There've been some, a few things, a few times when I felt like we moved with a little bit too much haste. Multiple reading rules have really two reasons. One is to slow down the process a little bit so that everything is well-considered. The other is to allow interested parties the time and notice to know what's going on. If you come in and you say, okay, we're going to call this first reading, and we're going to tell Daniel to, to draft something up, that's first reading. And then second reading, potentially substantially amend it. It's not very good notice for people watching, and it also can have an impact on our, on due consideration on our part. This would be almost like a third reading rule, and this might be a very, a very example of it, is when something is proposed, we, we ask for a, a draft. It comes back to us, we do amendments. But it doesn't finally, it shouldn't, in my opinion, shouldn't finally pass until a second reading where nothing substantively changes. Potentially, and in a way, at least one in, in instance, you can completely change the, the purpose between first and second reading. I mean, it's not, it's not like you change the subject, but you can, can almost turn the thing on its head in second reading. And at that point, to me, that's really just first reading.
Yeah, I've always thought that you should, you can change the shade of the color.
Right.
But you can't change the color.
Right.
And, and it's kind of like, if you're going to change the color in the second reading, then it has to come back to another second reading or start all over and go to first reading and then second.
Right. That's, that's basically what I'm, and I don't know the best way to wordsmith that. I would leave that to Daniel. But I'm, I'm just asking that we instruct him to do a, a draft of the spirit of what I'm describing, and then we go from there to see if we like it.
First reading is done properly, and the second reading shouldn't be a new bill filed.
Really, really shouldn't. I, I kind of liken it to, I liked, honestly, I've lived in three states. I've monitored legislatures in three different states. I am from Texas. It's not because I'm from Texas, although I know there are issues with that here sometimes. But, uh, but the Texas House had a really good 1, 2, 3 rule. One was the introduction, that was the first reading. The second reading, they fully debated the bill, they amended it. Third reading was two-thirds vote to amend, which meant that it was only technical amendments. And that's basically what I'm saying I would like to see in second reading. A tech, you know, okay, if it's non-substantive, but we have to fix a word or something.
So do we need any rules process on that, you think, Daniel, or what, what's up?
Well, I think how we've been doing it in practice, kind of in, in this new era of the kind of staff you've got, we've been doing kind of what I'm calling, like a, like a, like our first has really been a pre-meeting. We'd kind of flush out the idea, and then we'd get our first draft. So maybe when we're doing that first meeting, that's more of our brainstorming session, maybe we have a draft at that point that we work from, and we can put that in an ordinance. And then by the time it hits first reading, we've really got a, a good draft in place. So put more work on that, on that first meeting about the topic. And I'll draft something up for the next meeting if you guys like, like me do that.
So with what you draft up, will that be the draft, or will that be the first, first?
That would be the draft.
Okay, so we're going to essentially have three separate.
Essentially, we'll have, start having three readings. You have your draft reading, your first reading, and your second and final.
Can, are you going to, are you going to include something in there about changes between the first and second in regards to substitute what he said?
Yeah, and it's an interesting topic. I'll brainstorm it a lot. I don't want to make it, I would suggest you don't make it too tight because when you do get an issue, that's really important. But then again, you could call us, if it's not important, it's special, if that's important. That, that's a fair point. So, um, yeah, I'll, I'll put that together.
Will somebody make a motion to direct him to do that?
I move that we direct Daniel to, uh, draft a rule to be included in our city council rules along the lines of our, of what we've discussed. Second.
Matt.
Aye.
Ron. Aye. Rob.
Aye.
Jonathan.
Aye.
Got it scheduled, knock it out.
I have nine new business. I don't have any new business. Um, so we've already done the PMA, so I'm going to adjourn this minute.
Got your schedule, Byron.
Thank you, sir.
But I want you to hear, I just want you to do that in the end. More, that's where the council goes on.
Yeah, we have a handful of them.
But so why are we here?
I don't know if that, I don't know if that really even having mowed the right way. Well, does it relieve me from having to mow the right way into my house?
Question from you, from you. If I run over and hit a rock in that ditch and kill a kid driving down the road with his mom in the car, am I liable or is it city liable?
The same question applies to anybody mowing their property.
But that's not my property. I don't get to use it. The city of Piedmont is using that property. In the city, it's designated to the city of Piedmont.
Same thing, same thing in my front yard. Robert, it's the same thing in my front yard, too.
I understand that.
And I have to mow that, too.
Do you walk your front yard before you mow it?
Yeah.
Do I, do you want me to walk 20 miles of bar ditch and clean up everything that's thrown out? Is that going to be my responsibility?
I don't think you have 20 miles of bar ditch to hit a. This is the whole, farmers and ag practices, you get a lot of them. Let me tell, listen to me, this is. Listen to one of these, okay? Guess what? You can go down the road, and if you drop your discs or plow or whatever on Piedmont, you don't have to face it. The city knows. It's a little give and take. I just want to run, I don't want to run on it.
Down the road, tire, runs off your disc, and bounces off and bounces through my windshield. Do you have, are you liable for that?
Yes.
Okay, so what's the difference?
Because I don't want the extra liability.
Well, then don't, then don't, don't.
You can't tell me not to own the property, that's bullshit.
That's what happens with.
No, that's bullshit.